It is a little bit after seven. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag. We've got a great crowd in Elton tonight. Thank you all for coming tonight. Commissioner Jablowski will not be here this evening. She's actually in Atlanta, Georgia, receiving the Main Street Award, a nationally honored, a national program that she has been, or Main Street has been awarded for. So proud that she could get down there and accept that award. When's Mary Jo getting back? Does anyone know what day she's getting back?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, very good. All righty, minutes of the March 18 meeting. Do we have a motion to approve?
Some of.
A second? And do we have any discussion on the minutes? Carried none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial reports. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
I'll make the motion.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have any discussion on the financial report? I wanted to make one comment real quickly that I authorized Steve Repo in the town. We moved somebody over into the Columbia Bank account. We were able to get a 30 percent better interest rate than what we were currently getting. And I want to say that these slim rates that we get, the percentage of 30 percent sounds far greater than what it really is. The town of Elton is currently receiving 1/10 of a percent on their investments. And we were able to get .13 percent on that money. And you can look at it and say it was a 30 percent increase, but it's not the way interest rates used to be. All in favor?
Aye.
Gene, I think you're up for a proclamation.
It's April again, and every year, the town of Elton has a proclamation recognizing April as Fair Housing Month. So this year's proclamation reads, "The town of Elton is proud to join the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in celebrating the 47th anniversary of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, also referred to as the Fair Housing Act. And whereas the 1968 Civil Rights Act guaranteed the right of all Americans to fair and equitable housing and prohibited discrimination concerning the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, religion, and national origin, and was later amended to additionally prohibit discrimination on the basis of gender and to protect the disabled and families with children. And whereas an order for the Fair Housing Act to be effective in prohibiting discrimination, it requires vigilance and continuing cooperation at all levels of government, the real estate and home building industries, banks and lending institutions, landlords and citizens. And whereas throughout Maryland, this spirit of cooperation is being provided through the efforts of our federal, state, and local governments, and with the support of many community and nonprofit organizations, and whereas promoting equal housing opportunities is essential to our goal of promoting nondiscrimination in all areas of life and for all of our citizens. Now therefore, we, the mayor and commissioners of the town of Elton, do hereby proclaim April 2015 as Fair Housing Month. And witness thereof, we have here and after set our hands and seal of the town of Elton this first day of April 2015."
Thank you, Gene. Do we have motion to approve the proclamation?
Some of.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks, Gene.
Thank you.
All righty, Ms. Cynthia Osborne, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Cynthia is our executive director with the Elton Housing Authority.
So Michelle tells me I have 10 minutes, and I'm going to try to do this in five.
Perfect.
I'm quite sure I'm not going to make it, but I know you'll cut me off when my phone goes off. It's impossible to tell you everything that we've been doing. We did submit our annual 2015 Housing Authority plan, which includes our five-year update for modernization of our properties. The ability for the Housing Authority to do something different has been on our front burner for quite a while now as a result of underfunding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development and also not full appropriation for the programs that we administer. So it's been a tough challenge for a long time, and we previously came in and had a discussion with the town about our ability to apply with the Department of Housing and Urban Development for what's called a RAD program. And RAD stands for Rental Assistance Demonstration. We were on a waiting list to get approval for that, and we have now been accepted into the program. So we have 30 days to notify the department that we do intend to pursue, and then we have one year to meet some specific milestones that will convince the department that we will be successful in our transformation from public housing to project-based rental assistance, which is a Section 8-based platform for our properties. And then we will move from Department of Public and Indian Housing over to the Department of Multifamily Housing within HUD. So we're looking forward to all the work that's going to go into this and this success that we will achieve when we've completed all the milestones and officially done the conversion. I will be engaging with you as we go through the process. We do have what's called a resident advisory board, and those folks are representative of each of our public housing communities and also someone that's participating in our Section 8 Housing Choice voucher program. So we convened a meeting on March 26 and had those folks in to talk about our plan and to update them on RAD. As you can imagine, it's going to be a huge change for them, but the most important thing is that they all have a right to return if we end up in a situation where they're relocated. We have to make arrangements for the relocation and then ensure that they come back to the same property and/or same unit accommodations that they're eligible for. But they are excited to have some improvements that will come along with the ability to transform our properties. The resident advisory board did not have any serious concerns or questions about the RAD program or the public housing plan for 2015, and they do have the opportunity to present written comments to me by April the 25th. And I would also encourage the mayor and commissioners or anyone else that's interested to stop by our office if you would like to obtain additional information about the plan or if you have questions or comments. You can submit those in writing to my attention at Elton Housing 150 East Main Street in Elton. So fair housing is something that we celebrate all month in April, and then we also celebrate the month of October, what we refer to as Housing America Month, which is an initiative that is brought on by our National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials. I serve with that National Association as their small Housing Authority Task Force member. I also represent the Housing Committee, which is the National Committee, and then a subcommittee of that is the public housing. In the state of Maryland, I serve on the Maryland Association of Housing Redevelopment Agencies, and I represent public housing. I serve as the vice president for public housing for the state of Maryland. So I'm very engaged and active, and I'm delighted to have the opportunity to do that because it gets me a little bit closer to the insight of things that otherwise I would not be privy to because there's so many bells and whistles going off all around us. But for the month of April, what we intend to do for fair housing is to publish notice in the Cecil Wick Announcing Fair Housing Month. I believe that's going to be in on Friday. We will have a storytime at Rudy Park Community Building on April the 15th at 3:00 p.m. and also at Windsor Village on April 22nd at 3:00 p.m. The storytime topic will be When Chocolate Milk Moved In. I don't know what this is about, but I do intend to attend one of these storybook readings and find out. And then on April 30th, we'll have a PBS series viewing of Race, The Power of an Illusion. And that will be at our 150 Building in the meeting room at 11 o'clock a.m. So if you are interested in attending, it's open. Please feel free to come on in. The highlights that I will just share briefly that I presented in our agenda and our annual plan would be that the Housing Authority, there's sometimes a myth that comes along with the families that we serve that they don't have income and they're not really productive citizens. And I just want to bring about that in our deconcentration study this year, our 150 families that we serve have a total combined annual income of $2,020,000. That's not much when you divide it out by family. It comes out to roughly about $14,000 a family. We have some families that have low income, and then we have some families that are upwards of $50,000. So the overall mix is an average of about $14,000 per family. We are scored by HUD in the way we perform in our programs. For the public housing authority, we are assessed based on our management capabilities, our physical condition, our financial condition, and also our ability to manage our capital improvement programs. We currently have a score of 90 out of 100 points, which designates us as a high performer. We are also considered a qualified small housing authority, which is supposed to deregulate us, not so much. In our Section 8 program, we are scored under what's called a Section 8 Management Assessment Program. And for June 2014, we received a score of 100 percent, which is consistent with how we had managed that program, and we are also a high performer. We have previously notified the mayor and commissioners, along with the county and the Department of Housing and Urban Development, that we were interested in transferring our Section 8 program back to HUD because we just, we're seeing many years of underfunding of the administrative fees that we earned to administer the program. The money's been there for the landlords to receive the assistance for the families that they're renting to, but the money for the Housing Authority to perform all the functions that go into housing a family and recertifying them, determining eligibility, inspections, and monitoring and so forth, was getting cut, and our average was in the range of about 73 percent of what we were entitled to receive. Having only one staff member perform those functions less than part-time, we just did not see that this was going to be feasible for us to continue. So we had worked out the arrangements to transfer. Because again of my involvement with the different committees, we learned firsthand when there was a study coming out that HUD had commissioned that would tell them what the required amount of funding would be for administrative fee for a well-run housing authority. Every housing authority is different, just like every community is different, but the study overwhelmingly came back with the results that if you cannot pay 90 percent of the proration of the administrative fee, then your programs aren't going to succeed. So we now have the belief that that administrative fee will be funded at least at 90 percent of the other. And as a result of that, we rescinded our decision to transfer out and notified everyone we're going to keep our program, so we're happy about that. All right, I know my time is up.
No, you take your time. You take your time.
I did share some housing needs statistics about the folks that are on our waitlist. We currently have 409 families on our public housing waiting list, 267 families on our Housing Choice voucher list. We have multiple certifications that we'll be sending in as an attachment to our annual plan, and the Housing Authority is required to comply with all federal regulations relating to housing, civil rights, drug-free workplace. We certify payments to influence federal transactions. We have to disclose lobbying activities. We do not lobby, but I believe I am one of the strongest advocates that Maryland has seen, probably the nation has seen, in reference to small agencies. And that's having a lot of weight, and we'll continue to do that. Had a lot of years' experience thanks to prior Mayor Jim Kraus placing me in the position and for the town of Elton having the trust in me to take on the responsibilities of the Housing Authority, and I've learned a whole lot, and I'm not afraid to share that with folks when they try to take us back into the task. One correction I would like to make on the back of the certification, it had some dates that were carried over in there from last year, such as we had a meeting last year on March 31st. I corrected that to March 26th, and also comments do state in April 30th, that would be April 25th of 2015. We, in conjunction with Fair Housing, we have one of our staff members that was fortunate to be taken under the wing of the Health Department and trained as a mental health behavioral issue person, that she can now train trainers to help with this initiative in our community. We're very excited about that, and today we had a board meeting for the Maryland Association of Housing. We intend to apply for a grant through that organization that will help all housing authorities have the training to recognize the mental health and the issues that our families face and also to help them get additional resources needed. And we're just excited that our person can actually be one of the people in the state or even in the country that can train a trainer. The last thing, two things, I'll quickly say. We constantly share with, at least with the mayor and Louis, all of the contacts that we make to advocate for things and to fight for things that are coming or not working well for us. We did recently send a notice out about a report that HUD was required to submit to Congress about what they were going to do to deregulate and streamline efforts on behalf of housing authorities and especially small housing authorities. The report was late. It was due in July of 2014. It did come to us while we were in committee in Washington on March the 14th. We did get the report. Unfortunately, the report says a whole lot of the same stuff that they're really not going to do anything. But Congressman Harris did take the initiative to follow up on one of the letters that I sent to him, asking, "Where's the report?" And this was February 23rd. So, you know, the industry is really tired of waiting for some better things to happen, especially when the money keeps getting cut. If the money's going to be cut, then by all means, don't continue to overregulate us and require that we do more. And that's exactly the position that HUD has taken. So the report did finally come six months late. We were ready to fire back that there's not enough there, but I'm very excited that Congressman Harris did get on our side and send a letter to HUD saying, "Where is the report, and I want you to respond." I did get a response from HUD, which was less than 30 days later, so I'm amazed at that, but it still kind of says the same thing. Here are all the things that we're doing. Still not quite enough, but we'll continue to fight for that. And then lastly, I'm getting involved with the Neighbor Works Institute, which provides a lot of community development, affordable housing, training on finance, building, sustainability, all kinds of things. So I had the opportunity to attend the institute in DC, and I do these through scholarships with our National Association, so the cost is covered. But I did attend the Basics of Affordable Housing Development, the role of the executive director in creating a culture of philanthropy, the developer's toolkit. And then the next institute I intend to attend is in May in Kansas City, and I will select the courses of the Science of Building Performance, Planning the Day, where am I at? Planning Today and Thriving Tomorrow for Community Innovations for Aging America, and finally Asset Management Case Study, Tools for Owners and Developers of Housing. So I hope to gain a whole lot of information in addition to what I already have, and I'm available. Call me if you guys need me as a resource. I'm here. I prefer to be right here working in my own hometown in addition to the work that I do as I travel, but this is my passion, and I appreciate your time, and thank you for the opportunity to come and talk.
Cynthia, thank you for that. And we received a couple of recommendations for appointments on the board?
Yes, you did.
And...
We have a position for our resident commissioner.
Yep.
And we have recommended Ruth Ann Rouse, who is a resident at 150 East Main Street. And then we have an alternate commissioner that we have recommended, Vincent White, who was a resident here on Main Street, that has attended several of our meetings and met and connected with our other board members, and we're very excited about his energy and his interest, and we've recommended his appointment as well.
Very good. Does the board need to know anything else about these appointments? We can move on with them?
We have a motion to approve Ruth Ann Rouse as the resident member for the Elton Housing Authority?
Some move.
Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion to accept Vincent White as the alternate member?
Some move.
Got a motion?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you.
Cynthia, before you leave, we had talked when we were talking about the RAD program about a construction of a new building. Is that off the charts now or...
No, it's still in. One of our properties, we do intend to do a tear down and rebuild.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So that's the second phase of our application. We have it in two phases. We have two properties that we intend to rehab, and then we have one property that we intend to demolish and rebuild.
Can you disclose what property that is or you...
Sure. Windsor Village and the Elderly Housing are the two properties that we intend to just do major rehab.
Okay.
Rudy Park is the property that we plan to tear down and rebuild.
Very good.
And so as our plans progress, we will most definitely keep you informed and let you know of any challenges that we have as we meet the milestones required. We may run into issues that will change our plans. My new focus is that life is a plan subject to change. We have to make the best of it.
Thank you. A quick question. All of Rudy Park?
All of Rudy Park. There's 50 apartments there, yes.
Yeah. All right, thank you.
So what happens to the waiting list during that time?
The residents will be relocated, and what we hope to do, what would be most feasible is to do our rehabs first and have the opportunity to offer them accommodations at Windsor Village as we are rehabbing. But we'll take units offline for a certain period as they vacate so that we have less families to worry about transitioning. But all families, regardless of the plan that they choose for relocation, have the right to return once we finish.
Right.
So we have a lot of negotiating and back and forth that we'll need to do with our residents to come up with what's going to work best.
And the 409 you said you have on the waiting list, are they 150 specific or that's the entire?
That's the whole public housing program for either 150 or the family sites at Windsor or Rudy.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Lou, you were on.
Okay, first item I have is ordinance 3, 2015, which is the floodplain ordinance. The town, this was introduced on the 18th and is subject to adoption tonight. Town's been in the flood insurance program since the 80s and from time to time, and managed construction in the floodplain during that period. We've updated our floodplain regulations several times, and as of, back in November of 2014, we received a letter from FEMA that will require our floodplain regulations to be updated once again. The ordinance 3, 2015 does indeed update these regulations more comprehensively, and I would recommend that the board adopt the ordinance 3, 2015, amending the code of the town of Elton, Chapter 15.2, floodplain management.
And Lou, this is just for adoption tonight, correct?
This is adoption. It becomes law in 20 days.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept ordinance 3-2015?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Second item I have is a petition for annexation. The petition for annexation was submitted by Robert G. Johnson and Nancy Johnson. They own the property 228 Wade Hall Road. The property is contiguous and joining to the town limits, and based on the qualifications of this property to be annexed to the town, I would recommend the board accept the petition from Robert and Nancy Johnson of 228 Wade Hall Road, Elton.
And Lou, this was the property that had a failing system?
Yes.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept this petition for annexation?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is Anexation Resolution 82, 2015. Annexation resolution related to the annexation petition of the Johnsons, and will, under this resolution, it spells out the zoning of this property, when the public hearing will be held. It will be held on May 6th. Also requires that the town submit an annexation plan to the county and to the Department of Planning, which Gene met her, is put together and will submit. And after the public hearing and the, on May 6th, and is subject to adoption, or enacted, action actually, to be enacted, and then it becomes effective 45 days later, June 20th?
June 20th.
June 20th. The reason we brought this resolution so early is that the property qualifies for a grant under the MDE to help offset expenses for connection to our water and sewer, so it would be a benefit to the Johnsons to have this adopted prior to, or be in the town of Elton prior to June 30th of this year. So I would recommend the board adopt resolution or introduce ordinance A2-2015.
Do we have a motion to introduce the resolution?
Some move.
Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The next item I have is the Resolution R3, 2015, adoption of building codes. The town, under Chapter 1504, is authorized to adopt by resolutions codes that under which building and renovation and things of that nature are conducted within the town and how it's regulated. These are consistent with the rules and regulations of the state of Maryland. Because there are updates to those regulations, specifically 2015 International Building Code, the 2015 International Residential Code, and the 2015 International Energy Conservation Code, these regulations must be updated and practiced by the town of Elton. Resolution being adopted will bring these into compliance with the state of Maryland. Any construction currently underway will be still viewed in terms of the former regulations. However, any new projects that come to light will be all under the regulations under 215 Code or other codes that are still in effect. I would recommend Resolution R3, 2015, be adopted.
Do we have a motion to approve Resolution R3, 2015?
Some move.
Second.
And a second? Any discussion?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I think that has a good...
Okay, very good. I have a couple of things here, actually. I got more than expected tonight. The good news is Howard's Pond is open. I think we stocked trout in Howard's Pond. I see that everyone's already started to start fishing.
I don't think there's any left.
Have already caught them all?
Judging by the number of people down there with hook, lines, and sinkers, I think they have noticed them.
That's very good. At the last meeting, I promised the residents of our town and my board that I was going to have together an economic development plan, and in light of Mary Jo not being here and after I reevaluate this a little bit, I believe it's something that I should probably have on the... it's something that I should probably have on the workshop so I could get some additional input from the board as well as the audience. So anyone that would like to give some feedback on an economic development plan and want to listen to what we want to bring together, please show up next week. And your input will absolutely, it's very important to me and as the town of Elton is moving forward. Was not an April Fool's trip. This is the time of the year that we start to see the basketball, mobile basketball courts going into the roadways. And I know it's, there's no one that likes to shoot more hoops than me. And, but I think if they're in the roadway, Lou, what's our policy and how do we enforce the portable basketball in the...
They're not permitted in the, on the streets of the town. So if the police come across it, they would warn the people. I'm not going to speak for the police. We have captains earlier. But I believe the police will tell them to remove it when, when...
Okay.
In that case. But if we find one abandoned or left, our public works will take it, take it down to public works. And if somebody wants to claim it, they can come down and get it.
So we'll notify them first?
That's correct.
Very good.
We'll give them the opportunities to rectify this.
Very good. I got a couple of locations that I can give you at another point, but that'd be great. Dan, it is that time of year to start filling the potholes. And I know that you're on them as quickly as you can. I think I mentioned the other day, we had one, there was one, I got a call in Road 8 in Hollinsworth Manor. I'm not exactly, it was to the right. We have a little pothole going into Elk Landing. And I don't want Gene to really listen to this, but there's just a little small one there we got to get taken care of. That Michelle will give you the exact location on it. But anywhere we see these potholes, let's get them filled. The trees in place. We've got some holes out there. And I spoke to you earlier today and you mentioned that we're real close to making that happen. So I'm looking forward to having those trees back in place. I think everyone is.
Not more than they.
The mayor's corner that we write for in the Guardian paper, that we always had a little bit of free press there to write a message, that's coming to an end. I'm sad to say that there hasn't been any, really any participation from the other mayors and the county. And I was informed that it's going to have to go away unless we decide that we want to start, there's another way that we can, and Mr. Capone, I don't mean to say this in front of you, skin a cat here. But we could probably, you'll understand here in a minute, you'll, the, we could probably write some letters to the editors, including Cecil Wig and to the Guardian, maybe alternate them and get the message out that way. Or we could see what it would be in both papers to buy our own ad and continue to keep the message through. Or the residents of our town that like that article, they could contact the paper and let them know that, please don't discontinue that article and maybe we can get it back. But at this point, it's done. At this point, it's done. The captain, of course, I think everyone's aware, but now we had a homicide in Hollinsworth Manor earlier this week. And we had some discussions and you were going to put together a plan. Can you enlighten us a little bit, enlighten the board?
Sure. We were moving forward with this plan for the warmer months and the summer coming on. And obviously with the tragic event that happened on Monday, I decided to immediately implement it. It's called Operation Saturation Patrol. It's a directed patrol. And what it consists of, you take a large number of officers and you deploy them in a designated area. And they take a zero tolerance approach to crime. It's pretty much the approach we used years ago on Booth Street. And it was very, very effective there because we cleaned that right up. They go in there, they take a zero tolerance approach. You're in essence, you're creating an omnipresence. And you make the whole area extremely unattractive and undesirable for anyone thinking of committing any type of crime. We also will be conducting some covert activities in conjunction with the saturation patrol.
What are your challenges?
Well, the challenge is right now for us is we're getting very innovative as far as scheduling. As you know, we're down about 15% in personnel. And for an agency our size, that's significant. So, but we can do it. We will do it. And we'll rise to the challenge. And we have, we started immediately. And I, even though it's only been 24 hours, I can tell you, in the first 24 hours, we've had zero officer service out there as of right now.
I applaud that.
That's great. Thank you.
I saw part of your operation this morning.
Did you?
Very good. Thank you for that. I've had three business, three local businesses ask me about the town's insurance needs. And I know that we're currently using Legit, which is the local government insurance trust. And I know that just about every municipality in the state is in this trust as well as most of the counties. There's 157 municipalities and I believe every one of them is in the trust. Because I think there's collectively about 180 to 185 people that's in the state.
181 members.
181 members.
But they have to be either municipal, county, or there's some other, some of the nonprofits in there. You probably would receive. Majority of municipal, county governments.
We've had, and I know years ago, we used to give some opportunities to quote on these needs. I'm asking Lou to, for you to give us a recommendation on whether we should proceed, stay with Legit or if it's something we should look to source this out. And it's a, it's a very difficult one because I'm really torn here because I know that the service, the quality of service we get from Legit. But I also know the importance to our local insurance companies to give them an opportunity to bid on these things. So make a recommendation for us and let us know the pros and cons. Thank you. And I think the last thing that I have is grass clippings. We have talked about grass clippings, grass clippings, and grass clippings. And there is a little bit of method to my madness, starting back several months ago. And the whole thinking behind this is to attempt to make people aware that the state will be mandating us from putting grass clippings on the street where they have the ability to flow into our storm drains. I think we've had multiple presentations and I see Sid is here with us again tonight. And he's probably the best educated person when it comes to these, understanding the mandate. We've looked at everything from getting a quote from our waste hauler and seeing what it would be to have another container to put the clippings in. We've looked at the bag deal where we put the clippings into the bag. We've looked at keeping the clippings as they are and we just continue to do what we do. I think whatever the board decides to do, I think that if we stay with the way that we are right now, we absolutely have to figure out a way that we can make sure that people put the clippings out on the correct day. But more importantly, we got to make sure that we're there to pick the clippings up on that day that's designated. So I don't know what our hammer is if they're not, because that's what happens. I know exactly, and there's several areas of Thompson Estates. And I spoke with a fellow tonight about the grass clippings. And he stated to me that he knows that his is to be picked up on Tuesday. And he said that once the town comes through, he said he's got two neighbors that put them out on Thursday. And we know what that means. It means that they're going to be there until the following week. And if we do get rain, it's going to go down to storm drain and we know all the consequences behind that. Dan, if the residents were to put their clippings in a box, would it make it any easier to vacuum or clean? If it was dumped into a box, if they could take back and forth? And this is just another little scenario I was thinking about.
Maybe. It depends how big the box is. The main thing is if we can see what's there. That's always the trick. In other words, if you have a trash can, we're always afraid that people put trash underneath and hide it, you know, where you're sucking up blind. So that's why. Could it help? Yes, it could.
I wanted to make people aware this is coming. I believe that we should be using the bags. But I think we've all talked to people over this grass clippings. And if I could poll each one of you, Earl, how do you feel? I think I already know how you feel.
Number one, we went from the plastic bags. We couldn't put them in plastic bags because you couldn't see through them. People were putting them in bags. Then we changed to, on the streets. When you talk about putting back in the bags again, we're talking about the trice cans, the big cans. I don't, I don't feel like lifting any weeds and stuff up, you know, for bag purposes. Other than that, my opinion would be is whatever, all I'm saying is whatever we do, we all do it together. We do it at one, not just partial buy into the bags and then the other half doesn't come into the program. Because we talked about that at our last work session. So whatever the way the town has gone, I will agree with it as long as I have the input from the public. Ooh, did that sound like Dan?
Sure.
That means I didn't have any idea what I was going through. But I have to have input from the public before I make a vote on it, so.
Where you have your most grass at, if it's a development or whatever, orange cans out there, you seen those, those orange cans company? If we had those and we put them in certain areas where you can only put the grass clippings, you know, if it's a development, everybody go there and filter grass in that thing and then they can still suck it up if they have to.
Thank you.
Out of the container.
Sir, I'll recognize you after, after we're done speaking and I'll recognize you for your input. Thank you.
And I spill on it, whether it's a box, whether it's a bag, or whether it's a can or a coat, it's the behavior of the people. If you're going to have a specific time or certain time, an arbitrary time to set it up, it needs to be done. But people won't do that. It's like the person you talk with. Supposed to be Tuesday, or it's Thursday. Some people put it out Saturday. So consistently throughout the town, you're going to have the grass clippings out there.
I know.
How do you make people respond to doing this while it's only given a day?
DJ?
I'm undecided. I, I'm glad Dan and actually Sid are both here tonight because I have, I have questions about it. I just don't have enough information to make a wise decision based upon the money that's being spent and stuff. And I'm not leaning in any direction either.
And I truly am not either. I'm truly not either. I think it was, I don't want to be, do we want to, do we want to hear from the parks and, or from the public works tonight? I don't think we really need to.
I just have a couple of questions.
Oh, okay.
Now I can ask it in my report, it doesn't matter, whatever you want there.
I'd say, I'd say go ahead and fire at Dan and Sid if it's about, if it's about grass clippings.
It is about grass clippings. You were ending, I was beginning with grass clippings.
Okay.
I just need more information on, while I was looking at the minutes, you had stated that there was somewhere around six hours or seven hours that it would take to take care of the bags and stuff around town.
If they were bagged and if people registered, so we could almost isolate the main area, that's why.
The, right. And looking at the minutes, there was a number stated of somewhere around 300 residents, something like that. There was 300 residents that currently, now I know, I feel that there's more, but I'm just, I'm looking for more data saying how many residents actually do this. It takes us all week, from my understanding, to go around and actually suck up the grass clippings. So if we have, even if we registered, one of my questions, sorry, I'm jumping around, is how long does it take us to tag residents that we're shutting off water? First of all, what's our average on that?
How many tags?
Yeah, how many tags?
We average and a quarter, probably about 600.
How long does that take us?
Well, we have to do it a day because the way the tags are written out, it's a 7A notice. So I had no choice but to get them out in seven days. So what I do is basically flood the department and we try to take care of it.
So we have 10 employees that would go around and do this?
Could be 10, could be plus, depending on the case. I think it's 700.
You see where I'm going with this? I'm concerned about how many employees we have dedicated for six to seven hours. And it's got to be more than 600 people, I would think, that's doing the grass clippings. And that's where I'm undecided right now as far as the amount of money.
Right. If you bag it, then I can flood, I can flood the department, get all the bags off the thing on a Monday in one day, and then do other things. And we allocate and do all the other necessary things that we have to. That's why, that's my initial plan is if I know where I'm going, it's easier to pick up that versus, you know.
I just can't. I'll come down next Tuesday if it's okay and sit down and I'd like to dissect some of this. If it takes us all week to suck up grass, I can't see where it's going to take us seven hours. And we're just, we're setting, yeah, we're setting ourselves up for failure.
But the bags were the ones you said, if they register. And see, that's the part that I said, if one's going to do it, we all should be doing it, not just part of them with the bags, not when I was doing anything. Because you're making double work.
DJ?
That's all I had on.
DJ, you're actually on.
Oh, okay.
You're on, so go ahead and fire away.
Thanks, sir.
I was completed, so.
I led you in really well there.
Nice segue.
All right.
Button Woods. Louis, I talked to a couple of people down at Button Woods. And some of the residents were a little upset. Actually, the landlords were upset because the tenants had thrown the questionnaires out because it said on the, it was addressed to resident, not to the actual homeowner. So I don't know if that makes a difference in our study.
Well, it makes a difference because we send a request to a person that lives in New Jersey that owns a property.
Right.
We don't necessarily expect a result. If we send it to a person who actually resides on the property, who actually experiences the problem, theoretically, the response would be more positive.
All right. And at 43, we were at 43%, right? Is that the total, the final tally?
It's about 43%. It's less than 43%.
Yeah, you got 65 responses, 43% of the residents there.
Where does, where does that lead us? Where are we, where's our next?
I don't, it's up to the board.
Can we put that on the workshop?
In the hands of the board, if you want to declare, declare special purpose parking. I know there was a discussion about that, but you would have to enact an ordinance to do that. I don't know if you want to go that far or not. If you do, I'll grab an ordinance and ring the board.
Did you say that most of them were upset because it wasn't directed to the homeowners association? Is that what you said?
Oh, no, 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 to the, to the actual property owner. The label that went out said resident. It didn't actually, so a lot of the renters were just actually throwing it in the garbage. They weren't actually filling it out and sending it back in. So it wasn't the property owner that was mailing it back to us. I mean, I...
Let's put it back on the workshop.
Fair enough.
One of the things I would recommend, I think Dan had suggested modifying the parking lots for the 1 and 500. Before I would even do that, I would actually have our engineer draw up a concept plan. And that concept plan, we would send to the residents. Because if they, we tear the trees and the little islands out of there, the climate or the appearance of that property is going to change. We're just like a big parking lot now. Some people like to have grass and trees around. I mean, they actually like that as a quality of life issue. So before we would actually go and start bulldozing anything around.
Sure.
We'll actually have a concept plan and invite people in those areas specifically to come in or comment on it. We'll supply them a copy of the plan. Because I think that in order to deal properly with the public, get the... the public, get to be properly informed, and that'll be our task to do.
Okay. Very good.
I want to applaud, first, I know that sometimes I'm critical of the police department, but I do applaud them for their fast actions and continuing actions of what's going on, and I hope it continues. I hope that there's not a timeframe set that it just stops after a certain amount of time, which I'm sure it wouldn't. But I do appreciate hearing what exactly is going on. I'd also like to applaud Michelle Hansen, Jean Minter, and Lewis. I was made aware of the annexation of the Johnson property a while ago, and, you know, it's something where quickly people pulled together and reached out to different resources and really made stuff happen, and, you know, government moves slow enough. But in this particular situation, things moved extremely fast, and it was nice, I'm very cautious about when somebody reaches out to me to actually handing that off to somebody else, because my name's attached to it, and I want it done the right way, but I can tell, I can tell everybody that really there was no oversight needed. It was done quickly, and thank you very much, you guys did a fantastic job.
The credit for the lightning fast response to the Johnson goes to both Michelle and Jean, who are exceptionally competent people in things of this nature, so that's where credit lies.
Fair enough. The last thing I wanted to talk about, if we could put on a workshop, just to piggyback off what the mayor was saying, I think it was two weeks ago, about rebates and rebating back sewage and water to builders that have vacant lots. We have a lot of very smart people here tonight, so if anybody wants to chime in, please do. My thought on that, I love the idea, but I really don't want to isolate just builders. What I'd like to do is open it up to even vacant houses that somehow, and I don't know how we do this, but, and the mayor and I talked about it briefly, is my concern is that we rebate $15,000, the total cost of building a house is just, say, $100,000, and then that money doesn't actually get pushed on to the end user, the person buying the house actually, the price goes up to 115, we rebate back to 15, the builder still gets 100, and then we flood the market with all these houses, which in the long run, in my opinion, you flood the market with supply, then all of a sudden, the property values go down when we have a lot of vacant houses. And I personally don't believe, I don't like to pick winners and losers, so I would like to have some type of thing, and I think the mayor's right that we can't, I'd like to pay for closing costs, or I'd like to, whatever money the mayor had set aside for that type of plan, that we help that person that wants to invest in our community, that we give it to them, and this way, everybody is a winner, the person that's trying to sell their house themselves, or they're using a reorder, or if there's a builder. This way, everything is spread around, and again, you take the median, and I don't know what closing costs are on a median of $200,000 or 175, whatever it is, but I think it'd be easy to figure out, and Steve, you would have to be involved in this, and I'm not sure if that's the right way or not, but it's a thought-provoking idea that the mayor had.
I like taking out a box.
I like it, but I'd like to see that money at the end, the end user person that's buying it, because then they go and they buy, they come down to Minnehan's, they go down to Lyons' , they go to Walmart, they go to wherever, because now they have extra cash to pay for whatever it may be. So, if we could put that on a workshop, I'd really like to expand on that. And if anybody wants to talk about it tonight or come to a workshop, please do. That's the last thing I have. Thank you.
Charles?
It's coming, the law enforcement for the town of Elkton, for the work that they do, and Elkton for the waves of crime that we have seen an increase in, but certainly it seemed like you're all to the point in solving it. Number two, even though Merrick Joe's not here in absentia, I'd like to, you know, thank her, and I'll do that officially at our next meeting, for the recognition that the town of Elkton has received. And three, Rob, I was going to ask about the trout, and remind people who don't know, that was your baby, and that's how we started getting trout at the town of Elkton. I guess you were a commissioner there then.
I think it was, I think we start the fishing, and then we start putting the trout.
Trout and that, so we're still being undated with trout. Do you know how many trout goes in, Dan? No, they don't let you know. You just throw them in the water.
They don't even tell them they're showing up.
They just show up and stick them in the water.
Very secretive.
Excellent.
Earl?
Just had two comments. One was, number one was the police department, that outstanding job that we've noticed they've been doing for, allows the crime to spend going on the last couple of months. And then the other was the employee of the month. We talked about that last meeting, and HR, they're putting a draft together, I guess, a draft, but they don't have a deadline on it. I was hoping to have something by now, because January, February, March, hoping to get that first one out there, but hopefully by June, we have an employee of the month to recognize. So, we want to do that every quarterly, and hopefully we have that in place for the next one. Okay, that's it for me.
I have one more question, sorry.
Yeah?
Where do we stand on the water study?
They are getting the information from the town, the data from the users and the contracts, and there's, we're still supplying them information, and that's what my initial services are, I mean, they're conducting the study, so we're still feeding them information.
Do we have an expected time that that's all going to be taken care of? I know once they get it, you were estimating somewhere in 60 days after they get all the information.
That's right. You mean the rate study, not the water on.
Right, rate study.
Yeah. Yeah, they would have it in 60 days, once they have everything from us, we're still giving them information.
How much more do we have to give them? How much more time is it going to take to give them everything, and then?
Well, right now, we'll slow down somewhat with the budget kind of in front of our sites here, but we'll imagine by five months, which is how we'll think.
Okay.
No, we'll think a month or a half.
Oh, yes, I meant.
Steve, did we get, while we're on subject to water, did we get any information back on the calibration of those meters?
Actually, they're coming Friday?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow. They're coming to do the cameras in 24, or at least, I think they knocked out 10, but we isolated 24 largest users, and we've contracted with Alby Water, they're testing side, they can test those meters in place, because they're too large.
Very nice.
We don't have the.
I think that's going to be interesting to find out, the results of that.
Very anxious to see the results.
Well, this is the time of the meeting, we open up the floor to the public, and I have a list, but I'm going to enter. I'd like to talk to the gentleman that wanted to talk about the grass clippings. I need to get your name and address, if I could.
Harry Delwater, 695 Water Road. I'm here representing veterans and salute to vets and all for our parade, we're going to have this here and stuff. So, we're going to try to have a rep here every time we have a meeting.
Very nice. Well, thank you. I see it to be a W. All right, Mr. Littenberg, come on down.
Bob Littenberg, 105 Wall Lane. This has to do with what you're talking about, with the major facility charges and so forth. 30 years ago, I was a partner in developing Bridgewell Parkway and Churchman Strive, that's when Sheriff Kraus was mayor, and I couldn't remember how much it cost for the facility to, but Jim said he thought it was 12.5, and then he raised it to 15,000. At the time, I look at it both ways. At the time, we put the infrastructure in, and I had a discussion with the, I shall put this delicately, with a previous member, a member of your previous board, and he argued with me that the town built the infrastructure, that's why they had to charge $15,000, which he definitely was ill-informed. The developer develops the roads after everything is in place, then it's dedicated to the town. A while back, you were talking about different lots, and the one property I assume you were talking about is up by Patriots Glen. Now, several years ago, that was approved for like 250 lots, I believe.
Yes.
And, you know, if you relax the 15,000 on that many lots, which I don't think that's the intent, but that's over 3.5 billion dollars. And there's another development that's got roughly 27, another six. If you relax these 15,000, you're talking around, oh, 5 million, close to 5 million dollars in relaxation. I can see where, if a person has a couple of lots that aren't built, maybe you can relax a little bit, but not 15,000 per lot, because that money has to go towards the maintenance on that water sewer lines where it may be. I think that's where it has to go directly to that.
That's correct.
But like DJ was saying, if a house is selling for 115,000, and you reduce to 15, you're going to sell for 100,000, you have no way of guaranteeing that that developer is going to drop that 15,000 off. And common sense is, if he can build it in somewhere, I mean, that's built in to the price of that house. But I don't know how you could actually tell him that he's going to reduce that by 15,000. I mean, I think everybody thinks that a lot of developers, they don't make the amount of money that people believe they make. When they, the time they get done building, the engineering and so forth, it costs a lot of money for a lot, period. Now, one particular, I got to be careful what I say here, too. A year or so back, there's people in one of the developments here that came before the town with work that hadn't been done by the developer, and he evidently hadn't make any, he just wasn't going to do it. Some of the lots that are here are, that were kind of mentioned are part of that. I personally don't feel that he should be given anything until he completely does what has to be done in order to be, dedicate whatever it may be back to the town. Whether he doesn't cut his grass, cut the grass, send him a bill, if he doesn't pay for it, throw a lien on it like anybody else would do. I mean, that's just, that's just a feeling I've got. I also talked to another developer, which was part of some of these lots, a smaller portion of it, but I don't know, they built out quite a few houses, it took them quite a few years to get all the approvals into town to do this. Four miles from Elkton and Glasgow, they can build that house for 25,000 less because of fees. Same townhouse, 25,000 less, that's a lot of money. Now, whether the fees are 15,000 is too high, I don't know, that's what, you have to make that kind of a decision. But it's a, no win situation for the town residents, but it's a win situation for the developer. I mean, I don't know what kind of money you can come up with, I think at 15,000, I don't know what the other towns are charging for that, but it seems like 15,000, it's been, well, it was 27 or 30 years ago when Jim was mayor, and it's been, that amount of money's been raised every house, whether it be a townhouse, you get per unit. So, you got a double house, you're making 30,000 in hookup fees. That's a lot of money. So, there should be a lot of money in the fund for the infrastructure.
There is.
I think there is. So, evidently, it's, the ones that have been built seem like they've been very well paying their fair share.
Yes.
That was just a thought.
Thank you, Bob. Yeah, they did. All ready, Mr. Anthony Capone, come on down. Tony would like to talk about cats.
Cats, hey, they invented a town. I had, this is Anthony Capone, six months ago, I had this.
Will it mic up? Can you name an address?
Yeah, Anthony Capone, I had a six bridge to Elkton.
Hey, guys, I'm getting some feedback, hey, Mayor? I'm getting some feedback from you guys.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
So, six months ago, I had a fat cat in my backyard, pregnant, and I loaded four cats, so I had five cats in my backyard. The winter was approaching, and I didn't chase them away, I stayed around the house and feed them. And then one, one of the cats joined the group, so I got six cats. Then the mothers disappeared, come back about a month ago, she's pregnant again, and she going to load some more cats. I can't handle it. I got, I'm trying to contact places where they can rescue and take it, but I wasn't, I had no luck. They all give me the number to call, it's a vicious circle, make me go around, nobody wants to take it. My question is, is there an animal control agency that's paid by the county to do this job, or what's happened?
Well, here's, you brought this up to me a few weeks ago, and Michelle and Bill look at you, because I know you made a few phone calls for us, and I actually contacted Alan McCarthy with the county government. The, there was two programs, and they absolutely tell me that both of them are supposed to come get the cats. Now, when we made the phone calls, we get to kind of complete a different answer.
Correct, they do not come and get cats.
They will not come and get the cats, and yet, the county government, I think, tends to believe that they are coming. So, we're, we are at a stalemate here, because I feel for you, I don't want those cats. Now, there was a, what was the name of the other organization that'll take the cats if you catch them?
Buddy for Life.
But they don't keep them. What's the name of the other one? Is it just Buddies for Life?
That's only one of them.
The one that Perryville uses.
Perryville, I was there Sunday.
Perryville's whole park is full of cats, and they'll come and pick them up, and they'll take care of them, but they'll bring them back to you.
Bring them back to me, I don't want them. This lady at Buddy for Life said that cat, she was ready to give me a phone number to call, and she's, then I went down on Torritu area, August Airman, down Chesapeake City, where they, they used to have.
Yeah.
And she told me that they can pay good money to run the program, and they got to take, take the animal, okay? These are stray cats, now they're not inside cats. And she told me that if one cat is pregnant, in the proper manner, a month or two, I'm going to have toy cats instead, because they're sick, so.
Dan, have, we picked up chickens in the town. Now, what did we do with those chickens? Did you take them?
Smaller now.
Now, look, I got to be careful here, but we got to do something about these cats.
The cat cats, the little cat cats.
There you go.
When the SPCA was active, then we, that's what, we had a cat, we had a cat program that the public works would travel, and take them to the SPCA, and they would accept them. That's how we did away with them. But the county did away with the SPCA and with the Buddies for Life, and they don't offer that service. So, we have, we don't have an option to dispose of the cats, we don't, we don't have anywhere to take them.
John, is it up to us to take care of our own cats? I'm going to put you on the spot here, I mean, what's our option here?
Let me look, and I'll give you.
Okay.
What was what program was it when there was an epidemic on High Street, and you gave a basket?
It was SPCA.
That was SPCA.
Then they went out of contract with the county, and we lost that resource.
Tony, we've got, our town attorney's going to look at it and see what maybe our options are.
I can catch them one at a time, because I bought up one of them.
Listen, I feel for you, it's all, if you get 30 more cats up here, it's not going to be good.
I've got a female cat hanging out of my office, I'll get on it.
I told you not to drop them off up the bridge.
I think that's all I have.
Six and one Bridge Street is where everyone told me, there's a sign up there.
Tom cats, other cats can join the party, and I hear all kinds of screams.
Your wife makes you too good of Italian food, and you're putting the.
I buy the food.
And I'm sure that you're feeding them.
I feed them, yeah.
That's the problem.
I can stop feeding them, they start to death, they find another way.
Well, very good.
If there is an animal control that's paid to the job, they should do the job. If there is one.
Yeah. Well, we'll get in touch with, we're going, I think we've got a direction to go.
I have an option, I don't want to say what it is, but it's a possible option.
Tony, we're on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Ron Walter, you are up.
Ron Wardrop, 242 Douglas Street.
Good evening. Ron Wardrop, 242 Douglas Street. I'll make these, you know, as short as I can. First of all, comment, Tony doesn't want the cats back, and I can understand. I don't know if it's cattle, if he'd want them back or not. If it be me and had a good place, I wouldn't mind the cattle. The cats, obviously not. And remember the festival, festival we had with the barbecue chickens? They weren't the, they weren't the chickens.
No, they weren't. They weren't.
They weren't the chickens?
No, they weren't the chickens.
You sure?
Yes.
Okay.
But I do have a question for you.
I'm sorry?
I have a question for you.
Go ahead.
If you had twenty-six cats.
That's twenty-five. You're not speaking.
I know.
The main thing I, I have in, in my mind, the main thing is, he mentioned about the, you asked him, he said they would give the cats back or something, organization?
I'm having a lot of feedback up in this.
Yeah, well, I say, he wanted, he said he did not want the cats back that they offered to give them back.
Yes. Yeah, he didn't want them back.
We had a drive-by shooter in our development. Well, I don't want him back. I do not want him back. Because I have grandchildren there, I have a wife that was there, and I sit there, and I surely don't want to be shot by some idiot walking through or running through the development I live in, just shooting the place up like it was Dodge City. I don't want them back. It's that simple. Okay?
Yep.
I went and talked to, to the sheriff, okay? Of which he, I sat down with him, and I know him pretty well. As you know, I was at the barbecue.
Yes.
He didn't have chicken, by the way.
Yes.
But his office was called in because they don't interfere in town with the Elton Police Department. They were asked to come in.
Yes.
And they were on the scene. So that led me to believe, not knowing what I did from him at the meeting, that they're not involved. So ironically, you have Elton Police, okay? They're running in there, if you will, chasing after some joker from Delaware. Their problem started in Delaware and ended up here where I live. So they come in there, and they're shooting them round. Now, who knows what round hit what? Was it an officer that checked that weapon? Who knows unless it's investigated and found out where that bullet come from? I would hate the thought of a stray bullet hitting one, one of them kids that missed the bullet. Because I happen to know a man that was sitting with his child, sitting with his child in his arms, and a round missed and hit that child in the head and killed that child. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I hear you loud and clear.
I was in the military. I, when I trained on a weapon, I became an expert at it. That meant I could hit what I was in that.
Yep.
A forty-five had a certain amount of trajectory, to the round, it would only go so far. You had to be with, you know, you're close enough, you can half, hit it, half cock it, you can't, you can't fire it. You half cocked that forty-five, it runs far. Okay? I was trained for stuff like that. All right? Well, I was not there to half cock that gun. And that man was close enough to half cock that gun and kill his daughter. What I'm getting at, it's uncalled for. Okay? Over in my neighborhood, they call it the hood. In Detroit, we call it the block. Elton has no idea when it comes to violence, gun shots, and all that, like I do. I'm from Detroit, in the city. I've seen it. There's a kid going up. I've seen it. So I know. Luckily, and thank God, I wasn't involved in it. I don't want them back. Okay? Now, that does not give me a right to go out there and confront anybody. Okay? I confront them on my own, in my way. Okay? And, and that, to be able to talk to someone that understands you, you've got to talk like that. So I put my hat on, if you will, and I'm going to talk to them. Now, you want to talk to me, cowboy? Let's talk. I'm not going to dramatize this whole thing, because I'm really upset about this. Because I might not be here tonight if I'd have been hit in the head. And some people might have been happy about it, which is fine with me. Fine with me. But I've had enough. I've had enough. Okay? I know that the department is trying everything they can do, okay? But they seem like they're more interested, it's like that new broom we talked about, okay? Of which I have a conversation with our chief at the time. Okay? Unfortunately, he wasn't here for me to talk to him about that. That's the only reason I went over to, to, to the sheriff to find out exactly. Other than that, I'd, because I know how our chief is. I know how, I love that man. And as much as I checked on his wife every day, because I knew the situation, because he shared with me his life and his personal feelings toward his wife. And I understand it because I had that wife. And I understand every word he said. He cares. I mean, it shows me that he cares. It also shows me that the town cares. Because I was confronted by individuals in this town. And I don't make the detail who they are or what they are, it doesn't make any difference. I know, and the person that approached me knows. Because you're all sitting here in your own way. You came over. That showed me you cared. Okay? Case closed on that. The second thing. I am and have been a businessman. I am not stupid. Okay? I might act a little goofy, but there's a reason for that, and that's my business. That's not show business. Okay? All I wanted to do, okay, is come here tonight to put that to the, to the, to the judges, if you will. Okay? Here's what I'm offering. The town, not me, but the town where I can help, because I love this town. Here's what I'm offering. We don't work with businesses. And I understand that. I understand that. I'd much rather have this at a closed meeting, where I could sit down because of public.
I would agree with that.
You understand what I'm saying? This needs to be, and I don't mean I need to be put off on this. Okay?
Yep.
I have a donor, and I'm like, I, I don't know who it is. All I know is he put up from thirty, thirty thousand, he's put it up to fifty thousand dollars that he is entrusted to me to use and use it wisely. Be a good steward. And I intend to do that. Case closed. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else have something else to say? Mayor Kraus, come on down. We're actually in the Kraus room.
Thank you. Thanks for the knowledge. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I, I, I have a couple things, and then I'd like to reiterate something. That was in your minutes, it was filmed on your film that I spoke to several months ago. My observations in, in Elton are things are really on the move, things are going, looking good, and I'd like them to look a little bit better. The other night, when I went up to Spire, just had my baby, ice cream cone, that's all I'm allowed to have now. Came in Delaware Avenue, and I thought, it's just, it's, it's a shame. The directional signs are all rotted out at the bottom. It's the same green paint that was on the baby coat over and so forth. But rather than make a drama out of it, all the directional signs were put up about twenty years ago. You know, and the main thing I would encourage, please don't make them rot iron. Let's get our money being spent more productively. I love the rot iron. It's beautiful, but it's expensive. We all know that. But we certainly should have our directional signs in this community, which is supposed to tell people how to, you know, find, that's what it was all for. The buildings haven't changed. But you go downtown, there's one, I think, laying down, okay? And the one on Meadow Park is, is rotted out from the flooding. And maybe that's probably the reason that one should be moved back towards the Crestwell Road or something, if you, you get new signs. I'd like to encourage that maybe those directional signs could just be, you know, new wood, painted or whatever, but something be done.
There's been multiple conversations about that.
The, the, simultaneously, you know, there's two major entrances from the south to coming into the town of Elton. Delaware Avenue to thirteen. If you, if you go out tomorrow morning to McDonald's or whatever, and you're coming back into town, take a look as you go across the Walter Baker Bridge down the creek. And just imagine if we cut all the dead debris, trees, cleaned it up with spring coming. You know, it would look so, so much nicer. And it, you know, it's, it just can't, I mean, there were some folks from Public Works down there the other morning. There was like, I don't know, two, three, whatever, but they were like breaking up, you know, some of the winter debris and so forth. But why can't we take a chainsaw? And, you know, this is, this, these are branches that are unsafe. I mean, kids get out and go on those branches, they go in the water. You'll, you know, your LGIT will get a lawsuit from somebody. And, and I'd like to, the Delaware Avenue situation, I would like you, Mr. Mayor, to put your neck out on the line, because I was sued, and we almost had to go to jail. And we removed silt and the mess out of the creek up by the water plant. It's disgraceful. You know, I mean, y'all are doing such a good job. Let's really make some impact on, you know, what could be done? And, and really, you know, some of the town functions could be held along the creek down there. It, it could be done, you know, with, with, I, I know that, I know, Louis, I'm saying, don't ask the Dagon Corps of Engineers, Louis, if you want to, you know what I'm saying. Louis has dealt with me before. You know, and just go do it. And hold the doggone stuff somewhere away and fill somebody's holes and so forth in New York. That's what I really wanted to say. But however, I'm going to say this again for the record. As the Minnesota reflected, former Mayor Kraus made a statement about major facilities hookup fees. Gentlemen, since Mr. Wansky's not here this evening, that money is to be used to replace people's water and sewer connections from a long time ago. In other words, when you, when you put the, that's the way, there's an ordinance in your, in your, in your town charters that states it, of how that money's to be used. Now, I'm not against helping somebody build a home, but I, I think it was like, I know it was bright after y'all were sworn in or whatever, and I, I remember going through all that recently. I dug out the minutes or went online, frankly, and they're so well done that way, you can find it very easily. But I want, you know, I mean, Elton Heights is Terracotta Pipe. When I was mayor, and I finished in nineteen ninety-eight, you know, that should have been replaced by then. However, you know, I'm not, I'm not the, I didn't do everything correctly. But that doesn't mean we should start giving our money away that was put away back then. You know, I mean, the, the, you know, the, one of the greatest projects I always felt that we did was when Walnut Hill was being built, and we had to have a water tower. The developer didn't have a million dollars to build the water tower. He couldn't get the interest rate for less than ten or twelve percent. Well, we, we put, you know, thought outside of the box, as you say, Mayor. And we went up there. You.
Yep, that's one of the worst.
You were on board.
Yep.
Yep. And, and what we did was, he had to pick up twenty permits a year, whether he built twenty houses or not. And he paid us back over five years with interest. And the town went out and got money at two and a half or three percent, very cheap. And we used that money to make the payments back. And that's all audited, by the way. That is audited from those, those, those years that that was done. I just can't encourage you enough. I'm not saying don't create a program to help people get into a home. I think personally, the problem is very different than what you're talking about. People in this community don't earn enough money to be able to afford a home. And that's just a fact. We just don't have the hot, the, the jobs. I watched on the news before I came down here this evening. McDonald's is going to pay nine dollars and ninety cents an hour. Let's face it, folks, that's twenty thousand dollars a year. And devil can they get a down payment together? Or what they'll do is they'll put them in a home with a great big mortgage payment, you know, and they can't afford it. And then next thing you know, you got back to foreclosures again. You know, the problem is getting higher paying jobs for people to live in this community. I mean, you know, services, I mean, I, I also salute this police department. I mean, you know, that's come around, you know, to me, my water tastes fine every day. I don't go out and buy bottled water or anything. I drink it. Has a little bit of chlorine one day. Might have a little Scotch one night, so, you know, whichever is the appropriate mix with the water. But it tastes good. You know, I mean, things are doing good. You got, you got a lot of, you know, the, you know, the farmer's market with the red roof real quick last year, like somebody mentioned earlier, how quickly things are getting done. But, man, let's not stop. And especially things that, that we can do. You got, you come by that Little League field down there tonight, there must be fifty people out there volunteering their time and working. You know, maybe we need, we used to have a volunteer cleanup day in Elton for all citizens to come out and help. We need to get a whole lot, but, but we got some. You know, but I go back to, I just can't emphasize enough about the major facilities charge and the money that has been collected to date, at least the majority of it, let me say, was, was for the purpose of replacing, I mean, we had, well, you know, water and sewer lines. They have to be replaced every so long. They get corroded. There's, I'm sure, Jeannie.
You still have the television things, don't you? Where we could put cameras in there and, you know, went through and saw all the, you know, places that are clogged. That, you just can't ram it out. Just like your carotid artery, they might ram it out once, but it might have to ram it out again if you eat it, you know, fatty foods and so forth. So, Mr. Mayor, I, I plead to you all to go back and research the ordinance and either change it, cut it out, but that, that money's going to have to be refunded to the people who put it up for it. It's not going to be, have to be given out to, to folks to, it's, it's, it's already been committed by the code of the town of Elton. It's just not been done. And I take full responsibility for when I was in office to have seen that through. It's just something that, you know, we talked about, talked about, and it never got started. And I just think it's got to be part of your discussion of what, what you're talking about. Reflection, I, I just share with Mr. Litzberg and Mr. Mayor, and I apologize that we were interfering with your, your conversation with the other gentleman. I think we should turn, there's a microphone back there. If we could cut that thing off somehow, I'd be all right. Because I don't want to hit this one.
One of the things to remember about the fees, okay? We, Elton charges a front assessment as well as a hookup fee. And both of them are pretty, you know, if you've got five hundred feet, you know, it's measured by the front of the lot, right, Louis?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, so it's, I don't know what the algorithm is today, but I'm just saying, people always forget about, you know, because I believe some of the discussions about major facilities wasn't, you know, they, they, they weren't paid. Because if a developer put them in, they didn't have to pay a front, because they put the, what major facilities money was in for, the front foot assessment charters that they had to pay. Because that was getting your inspections and so forth done. With that, please keep up the good work, and please, by God, find some way to get that, that island out there on Delaware Avenue down. And please get that water plant in front of the building with some nice signings on it.
We did.
I'll go by there tomorrow.
You'll go by?
I'll go out and get another ice cream.
There you go.
And keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you. Does anyone else miss a head? Come on down.
Jim, April eighteenth, beautifying Elton. You said we should have a beautification day.
I said we used to have it. I didn't show that.
Well, April eighteenth, if anybody wants to volunteer. And if anybody has any volunteer time for plants or ideas for the beautification, like you said, down here in the park.
Thank you. Which park? Eater Park or Meadow Park?
I don't care where, but April eighteenth.
No, no, I'm sorry. Where, where are we meeting? If I wanted to come, where, where do I show up?
The Alliance Office.
Okay. Thank you. Is it on their website?
It is on. It's on their website. It was on there, today was the first day I saw it. And it's April eighteenth, and it's at, it's right at the Alliance Office. I think it was nine AM.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else have? Yes, miss? I don't try to, I don't try to say.
I'm not complaining about anything.
Okay.
Pat Opal, one thirty-seven Milestone Road.
Pat Opal, 137 Milestone Road. Now I just wanted to address the board and let them know, on August 15th, at Elk Landing, we are going to hold a type of commemorative event for the end of World War II. And we want to get a color guard, we'd love to have everybody from the town come down near, we're gonna see how many veterans are still living in the area. We also, because we know the veterans are, their numbers are low, anybody that had a mother, father, grandmother, aunt, uncle that served in the war, if they have any type of memorabilia from them, if they want to bring it down, they can display it, they can talk to other people in the area, you know, and share the stories that maybe they were told. But I wanted to let everybody know, August 15th, and we'd like to work with the town to make this successful.
We want to do that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything to say tonight? I don't think it would be, I, I think it's appropriate to say that we've got one of the best bagpipe players in the audience tonight that would probably like to come to August 15th for that event.
I'll do my best.
All right, very good. Well, this meeting is closed.